I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Driggs?
Fathers, we gather together as Fannie County Commission, we ask your blessing on this meeting. Grant us the wisdom to make good decisions for our county. Oath and our Lord, we really, really thank you for the moisture we have received this past few days. What a blessing. We continue to ask your blessing in this manner. Continue to grant rain, moisture for this region. We thank you for the people in our crowd this morning. We have a lot of leaders, good citizens who work for the benefit of the county. Bless them as well, and bless all of us. Keep us safe from harm and grant us joy and happiness in our lives, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
I would just like to note for the record that in my absence, Dwayne led the invocation. And was very good at it as the rain was received. That's why we asked him to do it again. We'll expect the same results.
You did this to me three years ago, too, guys.
I don't have any particular comments this morning. There is a consent agenda. We've all had the information properly to us. I thank the review committee and preparation committee. For the timeliness of receipt of the agenda packets. Is there a motion on the consent?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll turn to public comment. Anybody have any public comments this morning from the public, seeing or hearing none? We'll move on then immediately to the business items. First on the agenda is from the Fire Department Chief John Ursick. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? Any questions on the activity report for the month? Okay, moving to the, if you don't mind, I'll move into the second one, the Station Three update. So, prior to pre-construction meetings, the total estimated cost was fifteen point six million dollars, which included thirteen point three seven five for the construction of the building and the remaining balance for the contingency fees. After two meetings with Crossland Construction, the architect, Fannie County EMS Director Swartz, and myself, we were able to thoroughly review the project budget and identify the area to reduce costs without compromising the quality of the project. The team successfully opted to value engineer thirty-one items, reducing the cost of the fire station by two point three million dollars to three point three million dollars, thirteen point three million dollars. The cost savings are a result of a number of factors, including changes in specifications in the building and more efficient use of resources. Some of the larger items include the landscaping to be completed by in-house, modifying the signage and roof angles of the building, remove the firefighter's pole, reducing number of bathrooms and EMS, change in various finishes and construction materials, updating some mechanical and electrical systems. The next phase of the pre-construction meeting is to meet with engineers and architects to redesign the drawings and update specifications in accordance with our desired value engineering changes. After that is completed, a guaranteed maximum price will be established. So, for you today, we're asking that you approve changes to Fire Station Three Building and authorize engineers and architects to redesign the accepted value engineering changes. The governing body may deny the request and provide further guidance. Staff recommends the alternative one to authorize engineers and architects to redesign Station Three.
Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I, just because it is a fire station EMS, out of courtesy to Skylar. Skylar, do you have any additional comments or anything from what the chief has presented to us?
No, I don't. I'm very happy with where we're going on it.
Thank you.
John, will you redid the project again as the way I take it?
Yes. Yeah, we'll go through the redesign, the whole, the prints that we identified in the value engineering portion, and then send it out to bid to get that guaranteed maximum price.
It should be a construction management type.
Yes, construction manager at risk. So, once they give the guaranteed maximum price, it's not to exceed that, so.
Do you feel like the reduction is enough to get some quality bids this time around, or?
I do. I feel very comfortable with the team that we got and the way we're moving, and I hope to see a fire station within sixteen to eighteen months, so.
Okay, that was my question, what's the timeline?
With the simplicity of the value engineering and redesigning some of the roof, we are looking at cutting months off, not only money, but months off. So, twelve to sixteen months is the new. Once we've signed the construction contract, start mobilizing Crossland Construction, and we're hoping twelve to sixteen months.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve changes to the Fire Station Three and EMS building and authorize engineers and architects to redesign accepted value engineering changes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept alternative one in the presentation. Is there any further discussion?
One more question. You've got all the fiber and all those things taken care of for the facility.
Yeah, we're aware of the fiber that's going in and the landscape that we're going to do on the side. Just the city and county will do that without including the architect and the contractors to hopefully eliminate a little bit of a cost there, too.
Further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next is Station Number Three update. Excuse me, City of Garden City. Matt, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. It's good to be before you. This is a, an annual update on housing. This kind of checks that box. But it's also an overview of the economic development tools that we use, setting up a policy decision for you later. I think in your packets, you had a rather long PowerPoint. We aren't going to go through each of those slides because there's a good chunk of that presentation in the middle that goes development by development on the housing side. And I don't know that we need to go development by development, but if there are some that you have questions about, we can take care of those at the end. But in the interest of trying to keep this as short as possible, we'll kind of do the macro level review of our housing incentives and our economic development tools. So, the first slide, you can change, is a list of, a list of the tools that we primarily use in, in Garden City that virtually all require partnership with our other taxing entities. And so, going over those, the Rural Housing Incentive District is a tax increment financing tool. Property tax increment financing tool requires not necessarily a vote in the affirmative, but the avoidance of a vote in the negative from each of the taxing entities. So, the school district, the college, Fannie County, and Garden City all have to agree in principle that that investment is worth the deferred revenue. A Community Improvement District, or CID, is one that is sales tax related. And in a, in a community improvement district, the developer is levying, levying an additional sales tax on that property. So, that's also an increment tool, but it's an increment that's created by the developer and then paid for as an added increment by people that shop for items, taxable items within that district. Tax increment financing is, is kind of the historic property tax increment tool used for certain eligible reimbursable expenses on industrial and commercial projects. Sales tax and revenue bonds, or STAR bonds, or attraction-based sales tax is an attraction-based sales tax incentive. It requires a minimum amount of investment, and also an attraction that, these are my words, not necessarily the statute's words, creates something that's enough of an attraction to bring new money into Kansas. So, again, those attractions aren't really meant to stir the pot of existing sales within Kansas, like moving somebody from Grapevine to Garden to Dodge to Liberal and trying to more or less steal shoppers from each of those communities. It's more to attract people from Colorado and Nebraska and Oklahoma or Texas. Special assessments. Now, we haven't used special assessments for development in some time, but this was probably in the late nineties and early two thousands, the housing tool of choice. But when the City of Garden City became what I'll call built out, so we had, we may have had some available acreage inside the city limits, but it hadn't yet been developed with roads, water, sewer, electric. And so, those, the cost of that infrastructure, and really, it was purely materials because we don't add much, if anything, on top of that for any of the utilities. It became almost an equal amount to the value of the land. And so, when property began to arrive where it would take forty to forty-five thousand for the infrastructure alone, and the cost of the land added up to what a developable single-family lot would be, that incentive kind of fell by the wayside. We went for a period without development before the RHID tool came into place, and then that allowed us to actually begin doing some housing improvements then. Neighborhood revitalization program. This has been around a while, established in the nineties. The enabling legislation of that created a cap, well, depending on the type of development, created a cap. The interesting part about the cap is, one, it didn't have some adjustment over time. And so, the value of projects that hit, let's say, a three million dollar cap threshold now are, we have a lot of projects that might be good fits for NRP, but they exceed the cap. It was written in a way where when it exceeded the cap, it made the project ineligible. It didn't cap the benefit. It kicked the project out of even being eligible for it. So, based on the filing of the permit, hey, we think this is a five million dollar project, neighborhood revitalization plan might have been a good tool. And it uses a tax increment concept, a little bit shorter time. It's an income back to the property. So, it's, there's a little bit of difference, but the premise of the tool is still that you create a new increment. You get the benefit of that increment to help pay for offset eligible costs that were related to the improvements you made. But it's become effectively useless in the last decade because of that cap. We'll talk more about that later. Industrial revenue bonds, this is in accordance with the Fannie County Garden City Shared Economic Development Policy that projects that are eligible for industrial revenue bonds, they get the advantage of issuing those bonds, which is sales tax exemptions and the expenses related to the construction of the project. But also, based on either the number of employees or the value of investment, those projects have the opportunity to re, to receive a property ta, partial property tax abatement. This is the only version of a property tax abatement that is in our incentive toolbox. And it is, it is limited at sixty percent, although for major projects, the County Commission does have the authority to go beyond that. And you've used that once in the Dairy Farmer's of America project, you issued a partial property tax abatement up to seventy percent. So, a lot of projects will end up in that thirty percent to sixty percent range if they go this route and they're large enough. Cash incentives or waiver of fees, those are things that the city might use. Those aren't necessarily related, related to the county. On some retail projects, particularly in ones where we have bonds issued and, and getting development in there pays off those bonds faster. We kind of do a little bit of a cost-benefit analysis on some projects and have offered cash incentives to, when building permits are issued and certificate of occupancies are awarded, to get major sales tax and property tax generators built out quicker than they might otherwise would have without the incentive. All right, so that's an overview of all the tools in the toolbox. This is going to focus on Rural Housing Incentive District, the annual accountability report back to you, and then we're going to talk a little bit about Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. Change slides, yeah, there we go. So, this, this chart kind of shows the most, the results of the most recent chat, which is the housing study that is done about every two years. I think maybe we've had a time or two where that's eked out to three years. But more or less, this is the required housing study that's required to show that there is demand for housing. We consistently show that there is demand. Next slide, please. Residential permits versus certificate of occupancies. If you can compare this to the demand and the projected average annual units needed, you can see that while we're getting certificate, certificates of occupancy issued, we're not getting them issued probably at the rate we need to even keep up, let alone dig into the initial demand. And there's certainly significant efforts, not just in Garden City, but Fannie County to address that. But as of right now, we're maybe out of wheel spinning stage, but we haven't fully caught traction.
Matt, what, the graph on the right, the lines, what, that because of the lack of people down, or?
You want to back up slide? Oh, that one, okay.
Or did people not request you to do that?
Yeah, so this is based purely on contractor activity. We do have develop, developers that have developed properties. So, we might have, we have a couple subdivisions that have a two hundred to two hundred and fifty platted lots. This is based on contractor activity when they end up, you know, and I can think of a couple large ones where it's really kind of building out the infrastructure and getting that part done so that they can move on to doing what the housing contractors do. So, have, still wouldn't say we've dug significantly into the demand that's out there from a developable lot standpoint, but I would say we've made a lot more progress in developable lots than we have in actual unit construction. So, this is based on developer or builder activity, and I would expect this number to go up pretty significantly, especially with multifamily and mixed use becoming kind of an area of focus. And when we have a couple subdivisions that have a lot of developable lots, get their infrastructure issues out of the way and get to moving on. Does that answer your question? Okay.
You know, whenever a graph is starting to change, you want to, I'm curious.
Yeah, for a while, in the first ten years, it looked like this. And I think part of that was when you're focused on the development, and then you get done and focused on the development, you begin working on, working on the units themselves. And so, this graph would have this up and down and up and down and up and down, and with no more people that we have involved in the game, it seemed that they were synchronized, that everybody was going through the planning door at the same time, and then they were going through the building inspection door at the same time. So, you'd go, you know, this, this graph would go up, down, up, down, up, down. The next chart is really just kind of the goals compared against the, what's actually getting done. The blue on the left is what actually is getting done. The Community Housing Assessment Report is the middle graph, and it shows now, it's taking into account what we know to be true and actual right now. This study didn't necessarily take some things into account that some of the rest of us know that are in the pipeline that are moving forward. And I think the governing body's goal, which is the City of Garden City's governing body goal from last year, that strategy of skating to where the puck's going to be four or five years down the road, knowing that when somebody gets the idea that they want to start a housing subdivision, that's not going to produce houses for three years or so. Okay, permit, the next graph, I'll let you just kind of study over this. This is, if you look at this one, and then click to the next one, and then click to the one after that, and then stop, you'll see that over the last couple of years, the trend of focusing more on multifamily is, is starting to produce building permits that are a little bit better mix of single-family and multifamily. Really, to achieve the housing goals, this is a personal opinion, but I think it, it's, well, no, I would say it's a professional opinion. It's arriving out of study that if we're going to achieve anywhere close to the goal that our governing bodies set for housing units, or if we're going to achieve those together as the city and county and the City of Holcomb, there's going to need to be more front doors per acre. Just the cost of developing acreage is, is so high that it's really going to limit the affordability of, of a builder to be able to develop single-family residential in that low to moderate income platform. And so, that's going to be made up either by volume of homes and everything ratchets up, or more dense construction, which would be multifamily. And as you can see, there's more multifamily, which are the green dots versus the red dots going in within the city limits. Next, the next slide shows that same information graphically. Okay, we'll move on to the next slide, which you're not going to be able to read in the room. I'm sorry. You may be compromised in reading that, even in your packet. I can share that digitally if there's an interest. But this is just to, to show the governing body that this tool that you and your partner agencies have agreed to use over the last decade or so. Many of those projects are forecasted to pay off earlier than was initially projected. And in fact, I believe next year, you'll, we'll all begin to see the first project where there's a property tax windfall that comes into our agencies based on the investment that was made twelve or thirteen years ago. And then, then kind of a steady addition over the next several years of other projects. That's a comprehensive list of all the RHID developments in Garden City. The next slide is that same information shown, or not the same information, it doesn't show the payoff. It does show all the RHID projects, both those that have been completed, those that are in progress, those where the RHID clock started, but there hasn't been any progress made, and those areas that were approved for RHID and are eligible to have RHID projects. Okay, we're going to skip several slides now, and we're going to go, if you can find your number, I think it's fifty. It says assumptions and challenges. So, we're going to transition here from the, okay, we're going to transition now from the, that's the housing update. Check any questions on housing, or we can hear this one first and then maybe do all the questions together. All right, next one is Neighborhood Revitalization Program. We have an interest in pursuing with our partner agencies a retooling of this, and we come into that with some assumptions that we'd like to check off with all of the group to see if you agree with the assumptions. One is that there is support for a tool like this. It's a, it's another property tax increment tool. We believe it's easier to use for people. It's one that you, you know, if your project's eligible and you say you want to be involved in it, and you meet all the eligibility requirements, it happens automatically at that point in time. And, and you don't have to hire a, a development firm to help you through a resolution and ordinance and hearing process, which can, for some of these projects, get up in the three hundred thousand dollar range. So, this is really a much more simple process to use. Now, granted, it doesn't have as big of carrot at the end, but it doesn't have that financial stick whipping you at the start either. Our assumption is that it doesn't make sense to have a cap disqualify projects, but it could still be okay to have a cap that, that maximizes the benefit under this tool. And we could probably enter into some discussion on, on feathering that to be just, just the right, just the right amount. But it, it wouldn't make sense that if three million is your cap, that any project up to three million could use this, but if it's three point two million, it's suddenly ineligible. And we think this is a right-sized tool for small to medium-sized projects. The larger the project, the more you probably want to go through the financial pain and the time delay to do RHID. But if it's a smaller project, this is a way to kind of get a similar benefit. Start it, get through the process faster and with a little bit more certainty and a lot less expense. The challenges are really just restatements of the assumptions, so we can skip on through that. Here's our proposed changes that we would like to generate some discussion on. We believe that it would be prudent We believe that it would be prudent to increase the rebate cap to account for inflation from what was initially set in the nineties. And that the cap in the language of the enabling legislation, not make projects ineligible, ineligible when they hit the cap, but rather create a maximum amount of the incentive that you could receive. Yes, and I think those will present to you, will present to you, the way it's written now, it's different if it's a residential. It's different which district it's in, it's different if it's commercial. And, and so I could give you an example in one of those categories. Actually, I wouldn't be able to, Danielle could probably yell it over my shoulder. But the one from three million, do you know what? Moving that cap from three to eight ish. The legislation also, enabling legislation also didn't create a category for mixed use. And we think with the changes in the comprehensive plan to allow for a lot of mixed use development, that it would only make sense that that category would have, would, would have some language to it. We can have residential, we can have commercial. When you mix residential and commercial, we ought to have that category grabbed into this legislation as well. We also believe we need to reevaluate the map. You, you cannot have this be the entire boundary of your taxing district and just say, everything's in. You've got to, it's intended to be a redevelopment tool. And so you need to identify and be able to defend the areas that you pick as those being ripe and eligible for redevelopment. And we also believe when we make these proposed changes that we build in what's hamstringing us now. And that's some, some deal that allows the benefit to at least increase with inflation. That, you know, ten or fifteen years from now, what this benefit can purchase is still the same thing that it can purchase down the road. Next slide just asks you if there's questions, so I'll do that.
I'll kick it off with a few, maybe due to my infancy of time up here. But what can we do to help or assist the goal of four thousand homes?
Yeah, I view it as not a city of Garden City goal, even though it was listed under our goals. I view, I view that as a community goal in developing housing. I mean, it's to the extent partners like Finney County or the city of Holcomb begin to more aggressively partner with housing and subdivision developer, housing builders and subdivision developers. That helps us. And I would even extend that to neighboring counties. I mean, we know we're a regional community and, you know, Kearney County and Haskell County and Scott County and Gray County, they're just as much a part of this community as, as any of the rest of us. So, yeah, I, the, that's, that's an achievable number with that sort of a mindset. It's going to be a pretty difficult number to achieve with that happening, happening exclusively within the city limits. And so, yeah, welcome. And I know now that the county has RHID developable as a tool. That's, that's huge. You were, you were handicapped to be able to address housing without that tool. We wouldn't have done any housing in the last fifteen years, other than onesie twosies and infill lots without that tool. So, you know, we're thankful, we've hoped that that would be the case over the last few chat studies. And to finally have one that looks at the whole county as one community is, is a huge benefit.
Other questions from the commission?
It is Monday, it is Monday, I'm sorry. What would happen if we did away with the cap completely and concentrated more on the percentage of the incentives?
Yeah, in the neighborhood revitalization program tool, your question is, what if we don't worry about a cap? It can go as high as it wants to. We could, I believe you're going to hit and a, a price point where the larger the project gets, it makes sense to go do the RHID because it lasts longer. It isn't treated as an income. It's because the rebate under NRP comes back to the person they have to pay taxable income on, on, on that. So it's going to happen, whether we put a cap or not, it's going to happen naturally, I think. But there's no reason we couldn't adopt it without a lit, I think, unless the statute requires that there is one identified, you know? I don't think there, I, I don't think there is, but we could check that.
Other questions?
I have a question for Matt. Over the years, as housing has been discussed, the concept of unique housing comes along and, and then it kind of goes away. Any, any movement toward looking at alternative styles of building and so on in order to get affordability back down the ways?
Yeah, I believe so. I think that's in partnership with builders and developers. So having builders and developers that are willing to do that, then our checkpoint as government is do our codes accommodate that? And, and, and I believe in the international building code, there's the flexibility that's anticipated some of these more affordable style of construction. But what it, again, this is my opinion, what it came down to first is to what extent do our codes allow for greater density? And I think that with the most recent comprehensive plan and the changes that the planning or that the neighborhood and development services staff have done to begin to update some of those categories, mixed use being one of them. But it's really a push to getting more front doors per acre and to the extent that your codes allow for that. I think the creativity side of it then perhaps gets unlocked by some, some builders.
One of the areas I feel that the county can help the housing shortage is to have a closer look at, at seven and a half acre corners of pivot irrigation quarters and make a wonderful place for housing and not too bad of a place for mobile homes. And we've done a little bit of encouraging there, but not enough to.
Well, and those are policy issues for you all to make and, and, and direct our staff, our, our shared staff accordingly. And I know that they'd be willing to set those conversations up for you to try to find where that line is and the extent to which three of the five of you agree. And they'll be doing the same with, with our governing body as well.
The line is we have five commissioners and not five in agreement.
Matt, my question, I guess, is first off, I think it's a great idea. When you talked about neighborhood revitalization earlier, I thought, man, that's too bad, we can't use this. And so I think this is the right track. I guess my question, and this is also for the benefit of the listening audience out in Neverland there. Is this involve the state or federal program as well? Or is this strictly something Finney County can do on its own? Or do we do follow state guidelines on any of this?
So I'm going to, I'm going to answer this as a city of Garden City incentive because that's, I'm now realizing that's what I'm coming and asking you for. And we'd have to research the, to the extent this, the NRP tool, the neighborhood revitalization program tool can be used out in the county if we create one. Right now, it's not created. So it is enabled by state legislation and with a home rule ability to tweak it. And then because it affects property tax, just like RHID and the other TIFs, all four entities have to agree that we're using it. And so that's how it, that's the connection point to the county. But it's for eligible projects and eligible districts within the city. So I think maybe embedded in your question is, could this tool be used in the county as well? We'll have to look into that and I hadn't thought of that. That's a good question.
Well, I'd like to.
Yeah, no, yeah. I'm thinking because it's a redevelopment tool, that in my mind, it would probably, like the corridor between, like the Jones and fifty corridor, north of the river, south of US fifty, between Holcomb and Garden City, might be a, might be an area that's, that's eligible. I don't know that you could go break new ground and build new development and flip it from something that's predominantly ag and just, and suddenly make it an urban use. That probably wouldn't meet the spirit, although you might be able to, under home rule authority, make an argument that if it's dry land, that it is, it would have some redevelopment potential, I don't know. We'll look into it and try to frame that question for you for a future meeting, yeah.
Other questions of the commission? Otherwise, Matt, Matt, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is FC twenty twenty-three dash nineteen parcel plat. John? Good morning, sir. Make sure you address the community so they know who you are.
John Persis, I'm one of the planners with NDS. Palmberg Land Surveying Services on behalf of Randy Olford is requesting to plat the Olford addition. The property is generally, generally located at one oh five one zero Pierce Fuller Road. Lot one, block one contains three point four eight acres and the property is currently zoned A agricultural district and will be going through the rezoning process. The owner plans to build a home on the property and use it for residential purposes. The second submittal was presented for plat review on April nineteenth and met requirements. The planning commission recommended approval of the plat at the April twentieth meeting. There are two alternatives. The governing body may approve the parcel plat or the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And staff recommends alternative one, approve the parcel plat.
Questions from the commission?
I guess the first question, why three point one and not just five? Like we've always kind of, five was the acreage requirement.
So it's, you need at least two acres to have your own well and septic system. So they met the, over the, at least the two acres.
Well, I'll follow up with Larry's question. We kind of had this unwritten, this rule that we wanted five acres in, out in the county like that for future septic systems and so forth. Did we not, Larry?
I thought, I thought we did as well.
I thought we did, that's where I, that's why I asked the question, sorry.
Yeah, I thought we had the five acre discussion.
Seems like an odd acreage number.
What do they intend to build here?
A home on the, on the property.
Do they own all the property around him or is that?
No, he bought it off, or just planning to.
Okay. Well, maybe that the person he bought it from wasn't willing to give him five acres, so that's.
When you commissioners reference some understanding, do we have a resolution? Do we have a zoning rule?
No, you guys are on the planning commission or been at this.
We, we had some serious discussion with other community or farmer, farm areas about the five acres in years past. We've pretty much stuck to our guns on the five acre thing. Can only remember one exception, that we didn't hold it to five acres.
But whether it's in writing, I, I can't answer that. I don't know, but I, session's always been around the five acres.
What's the code say? Two acres?
Two acres.
Mackenzie's grinning, do you have any comment?
So it is two acres, but they're required to have a special type of septic system. So anything under five acres has to have that special septic system. So just to clarify that a little bit.
Anything under five acres, they have to have the, okay.
Yeah, and you can't go anything less than two acres unless there is either a public water supply or a public sewer supply.
Okay, that clarifies it. I guess if they're willing to pay for the special septic system.
An acre land, it'd be a lot cheaper.
That may be cheaper than buying three more acres, you suppose?
Acre, one point two more acres.
One point two. Almost one and a half, yeah.
The only other discussion I want to have, of course, the commission's free to discuss it however they want to. But do we want to wait until it's zoned to plat it or do we want to plat it and then let them go seek their zone?
This is pretty much our standard procedure, isn't it, to do the plating and then, and then you come back with a zoning?
Any further discussion with John? Is there any motions?
Well, before I make a motion, I, I think this is, we've talked about reviewing and updating our county rules and regs with regard to developments and so forth. I think this is one that Kara and Jenny, we need to make sure is on our list of topics. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the partial plat for this request.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the parcel plat, the Olford addition as submitted. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question about, on the plat, what's filed with register of deeds? Is it going to show this, this new septic system? Because we've had that rule, if you will, in place and then it's not in place. And so that the next purchaser down the road knows that that has the, the new style septic system.
Yeah, that, that'll be included in the, whenever it gets, after it gets rezoned on the building permit, we'll have them show it where it's located on the property.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Triggered a question in my mind with that. So do the applicants know today, though, that less than five acres, that they have to have this special septic system? And have an idea of what that cost might be to them? Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't putting that off later. Yeah, okay, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the plat as submitted. We've had discussions, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chairman set that precedent with one of his votes in a previous meeting.
Sometimes you have the luxury of voting, though.
Yeah. We used to do that every once in a while.
That's right, that's right.
Next on our agenda is an update from economic development, Lana DeVall. Good morning.
Good morning. A couple of things we'll dive in on, I, I wasn't going to go over much housing because Matt did a really nice job of covering that. But to, to the business you just took up, I would mention that you do want to be mindful if you, if you look at changing that acreage requirement. That will slow down any of the housing developments that we're working with outside of the incorporated areas of the city. Both Randall Estates and Spikes have two acre lots included in their subdivisions. Granted, those are, you know, Randall is along a highway where we've already got some housing development. And Spikes is, is building really in the corridor that you see the direction of residential really growing. But having those smaller lot requirements is what allows us to make those subdivisions work. I understand the one you just considered is a standalone, just a single family. I understand your concerns about having a whole bunch of two acres just plopped out all over the county. But for subdivision purposes, I would, I would ask you to be mindful of making sure that we keep development in mind and make sure that it can work for folks.
That is subdivision, though.
Exactly. Exactly, exactly. Couple other things, NRP, the neighborhood revitalization Matt brought up. I will just let you know that, that Steve Cottrell has done significant amount of research on how that can be utilized within the county. One of the key provisions in that statute is blight. And Jerry would understand that that means you have to prove some condition that makes it necessary to allow for this tool to be utilized. So I let Matt know that, that Steve has that research and we'll get with the city and make sure we get that back in front of you all. So you know how that could work in the unincorporated areas. On the housing front, we are working mostly on multifamily stuff. Obviously, still working with our builders on opportunities to do the single family stuff that they like to build. But it's going to be extremely important, as Matt said, that we continue to build up and get more doors per acre. to build up and get more doors per acre. So we've had some really good success with attracting some new multifamily developers into the community and we'll keep moving forward with those. Childcare, we have been waiting on a license from KDHE for that Third Street facility and continue to wait. We are now nearly ninety days into that application period, which is extremely frustrating, as you can imagine. On a similar note, I have my second meeting of the governor's early childhood task force tomorrow, so I'll be bringing that up, that we're still waiting on a license here. And they've certainly acknowledged that there are challenges with that licensing procedure as it stands now. There are multiple agencies that get involved in it and they just don't seem to move very quickly. So hopefully we'll get that under control quickly and can move forward. Childcare continues to be a huge challenge. Did you have a question?
I do. I'm sorry for the interruption, but how many positions, just that facility alone, that we're waiting more than ninety days for a permit? How many children?
Right, so this, the license was submitted for just fifty-nine. That facility can actually hold more than fifty-nine children. We can get just over a hundred in that facility. However, the licensing requirements, the way they're written, when you hit sixty, you're required to have an executive director whose duties cannot include actual teaching, nor can they count in the ratio, the per child to teacher ratio, which makes them unsustainable. So if, once we have at least two facilities under management by the network, we'll be able to increase the licensing capacity of that one facility because once you can spread the executive director salary over a few centers, it starts to make sense again. So that will be the one center likely that will be over the sixty until and unless we're able to get those requirements modified at the state level.
Do you understand KDHE's delay, any rationale for it, or is there any inquiry that this commission can make to move that along?
I don't believe there's anything this commission could do. Again, I'm, I'm going to bring, raise the question tomorrow. KDHE secretary will be in the room with us, so hopefully we'll be able to get some response to that. What we're hearing from staff level is simply that it's going through the process and this is the process. Bear in mind that this facility already had the state fire marshal approval several months ago, so it's not, you know, sometimes that's the holdup. We can't get state fire marshal's office and KDHE to communicate. That's certainly not the case in, in this situation, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In the spirit of full disclosure, in early part of the year that I was chair, year and a half ago, or whenever that was, I was in conversation with KDHE and their regional or district person or whoever it is, whatever the title is in haze, as well as Topeka folks, expressed these concerns about the sixty, uh, number and, and the delays and so forth. Met with receptiveness to the thoughts, but I didn't get the feeling that there was going to be speedy movement and that's been borne out with this particular case.
Yeah, and there was a bill that went forward to change some of the regulations. The legislature passed it and the governor vetoed it. She didn't, didn't specifically state why, but I judge that it's largely because she had already established this task force in order to streamline and, and get one agency in charge of that licensing. So I'm certainly still positive that we're going to get some good changes made, but it's, it's going to be a road, obviously, to get us there. Other, other things we're working on, four-year degree programs have really risen to a level that we have to address in our community. We are woefully short compared to other cities of the first class across the state and largely due to distance to four-year institutions. We are considered a higher education desert, as is most of southwest Kansas. So that's a challenge. We have to, we have to take that on because certainly that's what's going to take us to the next level of jobs. The types of businesses that we're able to recruit here require education and require that, that our folks have the same access to four-year and beyond degrees as folks in the rest of the state. So you'll continue to hear some good things about that. I'm hopeful that that will be one of the discussion topics at our fifth week meeting, so we can dive into that a little bit more and talk about some of the things that are coming down the path. The College of Osteopathic Medicine, we've been really, really excited about the things that they're working on with us. They'll be bringing students out for the first time this summer in June. They'll have students who get to come and visit and spend some time in the hospital system out here, working with St. Catherine and Garden Dodge and Ulysses, and they have a waitlist of folks who are wanting to come out and really get a better understanding of rural medicine and the different things they can be exposed to in a community our size versus Wichita or Kansas City, simply because we are so short on physicians that they really get the opportunity to deal with all types of situations. So there's a lot of enthusiasm around that and we're excited to have them. Research and data analysis, Shannon's been very busy working on water resource data as well as transportation, as you guys are aware. Now we've had quite a bit of time spent on higher education and really looking at what those numbers look like for what we're lacking in the various degree, degree programs. And most recently, he started doing some pretty in-depth research on allocation of state resources and perhaps misallocation of state resources would be a better way to look at that. Certainly our region, southwest Kansas, has been, the numbers would say, we've been somewhat neglected by many of the state resources and truthfully with most of them, the entire western half of the state has been somewhat neglected. So we'll continue to work on that. I think it gives us a good footing when we have conversations with electeds and with state officials. They need to be aware that we know what those numbers look like, so they give us a little better, little better argument, if you will. Leadership Kansas will be in town later this week. I'm presenting to them Thursday evening. I'm sure some of you have been invited to participate in some of that. If you get the opportunity to welcome them to the community, we suggest that you do that. It's a great opportunity for folks, mostly again from the eastern half of the state, to get to see our community and the things that we do here. And then I think you've all heard plenty of stories about financial situation and bankers and banking across the country. We had quite a few calls, especially when we had a couple of failures kind of back to back, people concerned, businesses concerned about what they should be looking at with their deposit accounts. You know, we suggest obviously that folks look at their local community banks. And when you look at the state community bank ratings across the state of Kansas, many of the banks in western Kansas score very high on, on those rankings. And they're looking at deposit accounts, safety of those deposits, and then really where those dollars are reinvested. So we certainly suggest to our depositors that they use that money, put it in local banks when they can. Again, you can, you can always pull up those local banking reports and see what the community banks are doing, but we have a few that, that score very high. And those dollars get reinvested in our community. They're doing loans here, they're investing in our kids through school programs, all of those types of things. So just, you know, as, as we told folks who were calling us, stay calm. You're probably okay. We're, we're going to be all right. But we do certainly suggest that folks really analyze where they've got their money and, and make sure they're getting a good return, but also really putting it somewhere where it gets reinvested multiple times within the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
This Monday meeting is where?
It is May thirtieth and it's a lunch meeting in the city's second floor large meeting room.
All right, and then Thursday evening, University of Kansas, where?
That's at the Community College Endowment Room. Yep, and there are, again, there's, there's lots of opportunities. I'll get the schedule sent over to you guys, so you're aware of it. And certainly if you have, uh, I believe we're starting, it's a secret. It's not. Hold on here. Six to eight is when we're in the endowment room.
Any other questions for Economic Development?
Yes, sir.
Lana, um, do you have an update on the junior college and area, southwest area extension? How's that?
Very well. Yes, those discussions are moving along very, very well. We appreciate you getting involved and, and helping to facilitate some of that. It's gotten much larger than what we originally went in and asked for. And again, I'm hopeful that by the fifth week meeting, we'll have some pretty encouraging updates to share with you, but I had, I've had three follow-up meetings now with K-State faculty as well as with President Mittens, so we're pretty excited about the things that are coming. Yeah, thank you for your help on that.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will segue into, from higher education and economic development into ARPA funds request, but only after a ten-minute break. And we'll reconvene at, how about seven minutes at nine thirty-five?
Yeah, I'm out of coffee.
Five, and next up on our agenda is Robert Kreitzer to tell us about ARPA funds' request for workforce development. Bob, good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm here on behalf of Western Kansas Career Exploration and Development Showcases. Big, long name for an organization that has been really focused on Western Kansas education, taking students from where they are, showing them career opportunities, and doing everything they can to keep them in Western Kansas. You know, we started here the last two years on work-based learning, and it was a concept that our school districts dove into, and there's actually a curriculum up there now that focuses on work-based learning. Knowing what to do when you leave the educational system, be it after high school, community college, university, that you're ready to go to work, that you know and understand what's going on. In Western Kansas, we have some of the most phenomenal, talented students. They have a great work ethic, and yet, in so many cases, we send them off to college, and they're off, and they're gone, and they stay gone, and yet, we have a tremendous need and demand for them right here. These showcases have been building over the last couple of years. They've had eight of them, and what they do, they invite students from school districts throughout Western Kansas, and they really focus on Southwest Plains Regional Service Center, and that's an organization of school districts out here. The one that's headquartered down here in Soblet has 34 school districts that are involved. In the last eight showcases, 24 of those school districts have been involved in the showcases, and there've been over 30 businesses that come into these showcases that show these students the career opportunities that are available to them. To date, the showcase opportunities have been in agriculture and the beef industry; they've been in health, all of the nursing, and all of the long-term care, elder care, et cetera; they've been in the teaching profession, and they've been in business and industry. And then, there's a separate, smaller group that focuses on student leadership, where they bring three or five students in from various school districts, and they work on leadership skills. Those students then go back into their school districts and share those concepts. It's a tremendously proven concept, and it's headed by a gentleman named Joe Coles. Mr. Coles is a past teacher and coach, and he's developed a phenomenal relationship with students and schoolteachers, counselors, and superintendents. He has this working relationship that when he walks in the room and he talks with these students, he brings their attention to them and he holds it. And these showcases go from about 9:30 in the morning till about 2:00 in the afternoon, and that's all based on busing, busing students from wherever they are to the showcase and go back. The showcases are held in really exciting places. High Plains Feedyard down at Montezuma, Tom Jones has a really nice, big building down there, can handle 150 students, and they bring them in and they teach them all about the beef industry, but he also had a session down there where he talked about business and technology. They held it in Dodge City at the Civic Center, they've held them in Soblet at the Service Center, had one out at Tetro Plumbing for business and industry, and the one at Tetro, they had one day of a showcase, and they had 14 different school districts, and then they had a second day for just USD 457 and 363. So this concept has been going, and at the showcase on business and technology, we brought in the banking industry, the insurance industry, we brought in a tool company and a rental equipment business, as well as the regular industry that was there and Davis Electric, showing all kinds of careers that can happen. All of this to date has been done by volunteers, dragging people out and saying, "Would you help us?", and having an event at Tom Jones's place and asking each one of the presenters there, "Can you contribute toward the lunch?". And what we haven't had is the opportunity to get some kind of notification out as to what is available, some kind of a marketing piece, some kind of a continuing session that can go to businesses, industry, as well as all the school districts. Lana, talk a little bit about continuing education. You passed a deal with a community college that was really focused on retraining people due to COVID. The community college has done such a great job of creating whatever kind of a program we needed to serve our local industries. The challenge comes with getting students here to go to those on a continuing basis. You know, Mr. Pishney, a year ago, you convened all of our area county commissioners, and they came together, commissioners from all over around, and the number-one problem that they all shared was workers, getting qualified workers and keeping them. All of this is starting to keep focusing back. City manager Matt Allen just mentioned that we were, we are, the center of Southwest Kansas, and housing is such a critical need, and that we need to rely on all of these communities around us. We need that same thing from the education standpoint. We need all of these communities around us to feed the community system, we need them to feed all of our business and industry jobs, and this is probably the best tool because we already have access into many, many front doors of those schools. And what we need to do is be able to free them up, take away from the volunteer side and create a staff, just a couple of people is what we're looking at. In our packet, we proposed a relative budget, kind of in the format of what ARPA is required, and we're a fledgling organization because we've never really been one as to what we need to do next to get us to where we want to go. And step one is to have enough funds to get it going and keep it going to assure what's going on. We shared in the packet that there will be five showcases next year, starting in September, and there's one in October, November, December, and February that are already set up as dates for the various industries I've already talked about. We need to be able to go out and rent the facilities that we're going to without begging and setting aside someone's business. Let's go have them at a place big enough. If we could have it in the exhibition center down in the fairgrounds, which, by the way, the one in February is scheduled to be there, the one on health, but we want to have a facility of that size so we can handle 200 to 250 students because the demand is there. We're asking you to be the founding partner, to use some of the ARPA funds to recreate opportunities from the people who were affected by COVID and to take us beyond into what we need to do. We need the funds, but we also want to be responsible, so I'm asking for a five-year commitment, not just one big number one time, and I know that there are some restrictions on the ARPA funds that they have to be spent within a certain period of time, but I'd like to see if you would consider, number one, making that commitment, number two, put our kind of money into the economic development, not that they can use any other way, but that could be passed through into this showcase, because we're going to be a natural extension of what they do on their workforce solutions. We'll work back and forth. They can report to you as to what we're doing and how we're doing, and if we continue to do a job, we can get the second, and the third, and the fourth, and the fifth-year payout. We want to prove that we can do what we say we're going to do. We strongly believe it because we've got great people. So that's what I've got to say on the background. I've given you, I hope, some information that you can use for your decision-making process, and I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the commission.
Bob, of the students who've attended your eight presentations, can you get a feel on, did you convince any of them? Did you get a feel on that?
You know, it's really kind of interesting. I appreciate the question, Dwayne. There have been several, Max Jants Excavating is one good one, they've had five people. Tom Jones has brought in a lot. Tetro, I mentioned them, I was talking to Justin Sanchez, who's the president out there the other day. When they had theirs, they showcased everything, and they got a commitment for an intern this summer, and then go into community college next year and go to work part-time, and I figured, that's great, what's he going to be doing? He says, "She is coming in to work in the business side. She really loves the accounting and marketing, but yes, we're making contact with people because we're showing them opportunities in these small-town communities. You know, there's management, there's industry, there's electricians, there's all kinds of building trades, the cattle and agriculture business. You look at the myriad of businesses that touch agriculture, and when they start seeing what's behind the scene, and we challenge them, you know, hey, once you're on the bus going back home, take a look, and you'll see a grain elevator. How many different kinds of jobs are there? When you go down Main Street and you see the banks, and the grocery stores, and the courthouse, and the law enforcement center, what's going on? One further challenge, to make it real, I think, to the county, how awesome would it be if we had a showcase here in Finney County at the exhibition building about the job opportunities in Finney County? Law enforcement between the police department, sheriff, city of Holcomb, fire department, neighborhood development, health services, management here, register of deeds, treasurer, all of the different things that you do, road and bridge, look at the myriad of jobs they had. If we set up down there and everybody had a showcase, EMS could have the ambulances down there and showing all of that, all of the other communities could say, "Hey, we've got one of those too, we want you to go look at that." We got to bring it real to Western Kansas.
The timeline for your status as a 501(c)(3), what do you think that timeline is?
It is established. USAA, United Superintendent's Association, the School Superintendent's Association has a leadership group, 501(c)(3), and will be a DBA under that, so it is established.
Very good. Is the concept for the ARPA funds that this commission would dedicate to this project flow-through and directed to EcoDevo, or would it be through the association under the 501(c)(3) status?
I think that would be your decision as to how you want to allocate it. The conversations we've had with economic development, they know and understand that we're asking for something outside of their purview, but they're willing to oversee the distribution if that's where you see so fit.
Does it matter to you whether it's through the umbrella of 501(c)(3) or through economic development? Which would you prefer?
I think I would prefer the economic development. The back of the brochure, if you will, when we get them printed, will show the contributors. I think it would be more of your decision whether you want the Board of County Commissioners or whether you want Finney County Economic Development to show up as that entity.
I have two things on my mind with regard to this project, Bob. One is, it seems to me that Garden City is becoming more of a spoke, and the hub, and the spokes go out, and this is where we're sending spokes out into Southwest Kansas to try to gather more of the student base for development. But our taxpayers probably shouldn't be paying for economic development in Grant or Stevens County. What are those counties, what's the prospect of those counties entering into this same cooperative spirit of providing funds for the development showcase?
We had a meeting last, a week ago Wednesday, with our Board of Volunteers, and Boyd Orr, who's a former representative, is in charge of speaking with the Board of County Commissioners in Ford County and Seward County, and then, at a certain level, and then going to the smaller school districts and cities and counties and asking for money. And I'm going to be honest with you, I think yours is the largest ask, because we believe that we are the kingpin of Western Kansas, and I think if we step forward as a county, and not, in this case, using Finney County taxpayer dollars, but using ARPA funds, I think we make a real statement, and we take this project forward much quicker. You see from the budget we have, we're not looking for exorbitant amounts of money. What we're trying to do is to find a way to take these 34 school districts and make it 68. You know, right now, we're really hung in this Southwest Kansas, and we've taken the southwest out and we put west, Western Kansas in, because we want to start swinging north and come around from the west all the way to the north side, because we need workers from all sides.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Bob, I appreciate you bringing this to us. I've known Joe Coles for many, many years, and he is a very charismatic, very intelligent guy, and is doing a great job with these showcases, and because of my personal relationship with him, I've had lunch with him a couple of different times about this subject, as well as a couple of other subjects that affect the community and so forth. And he let me know, the last time I visited with him, about the 501(c)(3) organization. He also had informed me about Boyd Orr, and I believe, if you use this somewhere else, if I'm not mistaken, whoever's running the computer, could you go back to the board membership? And please don't misunderstand me, I'm not being critical here, but I believe item D should be Boyd Orr on this list instead of Brad.
Yeah, corrected on one of our iterations, we had some problems, it is Boyd Orr.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure we're talking about the same person, because he also had told me that he was going to Ford County and that kind of thing. He also referenced the businesses that you, well, not, well, I did mention a couple of specific businesses, but in general, businesses that you're going to solicit funds from when the brochure's ready and that type of thing. But I guess my thought is, if we were to commit to something like this, would it be, well, first of all, let me make a statement, then I'll ask my question. When he told me about the 501(c)(3), I believe that funds from businesses, from counties, from cities, from school districts should all be funneled into the same pot of money, and expenses and salaries and so forth divvied out from that. And I didn't talk to Joe specifically about that, but it seems to me that if the 501(c)(3) is in place, that that should be the funnel for all the funds, no matter what proportion or what entity, you know, might fund them. So that's my personal thinking, is that would be the conduit for the funding for this, and I'm, you know, looking at your budget of $167,000. And so, that's the one piece, but the other is a question, and I want to make sure I'm succinct on this. What would your thoughts be to Finney County, providing some funds, whether it be the $50,000 for one year, or $250,000 for five years, or whatever the commission would decide? What would be your thoughts with regard to the county being a challenge gift, or a matching gift, or something of that nature, in order to encourage others to participate? And I think of like KJIL, when they do their fundraising and they have challenge gifts and matching gifts and so forth. It's in that vein that my question comes to you. So do you think there would be any benefit to that if we decide to help in any way to have it as a challenge or a matching gift to fund this?
I think it's a great point. Our whole goal in terms of creating the 501(c)(3), basically for school districts and businesses, the 501(c)(3) doesn't make that much difference, because it's a business expense, and it's going to be written off, and you guys don't pay taxes, and, but for foundations to give to foundations, it's a very big deal, and so that's why that was picked. We have discussed the concept of the challenge grants. We were hoping to use that concept with some large, private foundations, things such as Western Kansas Community Foundation or other local entities to use that challenge and that venue. We were hoping to use this as the money to quote-unquote "get established" and get us running, and what it would do is get us up and going. We can change the format, we can do lots of things, because we're at the starting gate. We can do anything that you judge is in. We can do anything that you judge is important if you want to put some additional strings on your gift, should you decide to make it.
And then one final comment, Mr. Chairman. I fully respect and understand what you said about the 501(c) not necessarily benefiting some others, but if that conduit is already there, whether it has tax benefit or not, it just appears to me, why have several different funds coming in rather than just, I mean, excuse me, funds coming from several different places to the showcase rather than having it all come into one funnel to the showcase? So I recognize and respect the possibility of tax benefit, but the, not necessarily in some cases too.
And we do intend to use the 501(c)(3) as that funding central core because they are also volunteering to keep track of all of these students who register. Dwayne says, all right, how do we follow them? Everyone who registers and their focus of interest becomes part of a database. And then any one of these contributors who have brought forth sponsorship, if you will, can have access to that database. There's the name of the student and their interests, they can follow them. If that student has an interest in a particular business, it comes back through USA and it goes back out to that business. So we get that interplay so that we have continuity. That's one of the things we didn't have in the past two years is, okay, who was here and how did we really do? Because unless it's some personal company sharing, we don't have that access, but we're going to have that in the future because of our relationship with USA.
I do have one additional question, Mr. Chairman, but it's to Jenny rather than Bob. Because the request is being made to us to use ARPA funds and I believe you did send out some information the other day, but I can't find my sheet here and all the papers that I have. We have uncommitted ARPA funds in the amount of, is it around $700,000?
Correct.
Seven fifty-seven.
Yeah, okay, I couldn't remember exactly. So I just wanna make sure we're all on board with that.
Mr. Jones.
You answered my question about the finances and where you're gonna get the rest of the funds, but I wanna throw a rock at you just out of saying this is what I will probably hear from somebody that's not interested in spending money on, you know, education. Again, they will say, we already fund schools. Why are we, why are you getting out of your lane and doing more school funding through a different entity? I'm just proposing this question to you, Bob.
You know, I think that's a great question, Larry, because we spend so much time looking up there at the school district and we all walk around the fence and we say, boy, I wish the hell they do a better job or I wish I knew what was going on inside. And we as a community and a series of business people need to go inside that school district and we don't have time or effort. And yet we all sat out here on the other side and say, boy, I can't find any employees. I can't find anybody to come to work or the people who are coming to work aren't worth a damn, excuse me. But they are. And if we take time to share what the real world is like in relationship to that school, if we build a relationship between business and the teacher, if we talk to that teacher and take him into our business and let him see what we do with English students, with speech students, with math students, and then we go as a business person into that classroom, we make that whole educational experience so much more viable. And all of a sudden, they can start seeing, yeah, you know, maybe there is something in this because they can see that people who have succeeded in our community. It's not education. It's the next step in development of people that are in our area. And that's what we need to do is to let them see the opportunities that have. And they, they're not gonna get that inside the walls of that classroom. This is our community educating our students of the opportunities out here so they stay here.
Well, thanks for stepping up the plate and challenging everybody to get involved in, you know, worker recruitment because, you know, like you said, we're all complaining. We can't hire them, we can't find them. But what was interesting, Jenny and several of us went to a K-State reception the other day when the new president was in town and he brought a bunch of students with him. And it was interesting to listen to those students talk about, they had gone to all these internships in Missouri and Iowa and they said, we didn't realize they were, this, what was going on in our state? You know, I thought, boy, are we doing a poor job of selling Western Kansas.
Yeah, we don't, we're so busy doing what we do that we don't work, you know, about our business and keep expanding it.
Any other questions from commissioners?
You have. We, of the $700,000 plus ARPA funding that is uncommitted, we have a timeframe in which to spend that, do we not?
We have reporting factors, but we took that as the revenue replacement so we can do the five years if we so choose. We just have to report it. It will be reported next year in our annual report.
My, my question, I guess I'm a little harder to persuade here than I need to be, but the ARPA funds is something we talk about, well, we can use that for a Westside Sewer District, which we've, we've not seen a shovel of dirt moved yet for that sewer district. So we don't know what it's gonna cost. And we can add to the college, we gave them $125,000 and for daycare, $600,000 and so on, but at some point, we're gonna run out of money. And, and with some projects that we've committed to, like a sewer district, I think we've committed to, we don't know what it's gonna cost. And so, Bob, I don't wanna rain on your parade. I appreciate what you're doing, but I'm a little reluctant to clean out about half of, or at least a third of the remaining funds with your request. So I need to be sold.
I have another question and then I'll let you answer them both, please, Bob. Where, if Finney County would choose to do this, would we have the same access, would Kelly Munnion, our human resource, have the same access to information to the people who have signed up for investigation into this workforce solution?
Yeah, absolutely. All of the people who fund this organization will have total access to that information as a presenter and if you wanted to become involved at the same token in any one of the showcases that you judge were applicable, like in the healthcare, if your health department wanted to be involved, you would automatically be involved in that because you have become a member. You know, Dave, I wanna just go back a minute. I, I don't disagree that there are tremendous needs for the, but a year ago, we sat, a year ago, October, we sat up there in one of those chairs and we set aside a million and a half because we couldn't afford to pay raises within the budget. Now, you're gonna soon see your audit and you're gonna know how much money you have. So maybe there might be some of that that can come back. You have three and a half million dedicated towards sewer districts and I think it's a great project and one of these days, it's gonna be and you'll, you'll know then whether the three and a half is enough. But if we don't do something like this, we may have all of the money in the bank, but we won't have anybody to do the work. And I think that's what you have to ask your question. It's just like City Manager Allen said, you know, we invested in RHID for the future growth of housing and for the future growth of tax benefits. This is an area that we have totally ignored as a county. And this is one opportunity that we don't have to go create a new department, we don't have to assign 10 extra people, we don't have to go out. All of a sudden, it's happening right there and you are the founding father. And I guess I can't think of a more appropriate use of money that was given to us by the federal government for the benefit of the people impacted by COVID. They didn't say it was for the Westside Sewer District or the Northside Sewer District or whatever else. It was for the people impacted. And boy, this is really impacted because these people are the product of that that are gonna be graduating. That's how I feel inside. And these people that volunteer their time day in, day out are all of that ilk. I am just amazed when you listen to Joe Coles and Jay Zare and Kenneth Harshberger, you know, and Boyd Orr, the people that sit there at every one of these meetings and, you know, we gather at 7:30 and so blah, because everybody has a job to do and we get it done and we head away. So all I can say is it's a worthwhile adventure.
I appreciate your commitment. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I, you have a timeframe here that I guess I would ask, could we stretch this out just a little bit and kinda see where our budget's going before we, we commit? And that probably doesn't fit your schedule very well.
Hey, you know, gentlemen, whether you commit or not, we're gonna make it happen. I think what it says more is whether Finney County is the leader in Western Kansas or if maybe Dodge City or Liberal or Montezuma, Mineola pick up that deal. Because if they gave $1,000, I think that speaks more about their commitment. So obviously, gentlemen, it's your choice. There are no timelines. It's a real request and the sooner the better, but whatever you decide, obviously you are the decision makers. And we appreciate the time that you've given us today to share our story.
Commissioner Pishney, you had some last.
Well, I have one ques, Mr. Chairman, one question of clarification with Jenny, but before I do that, I, I was intrigued and I hadn't heard about this relationship with the United School Administrators Group until Joe and I met a week or two ago, maybe it's been now. But I really appreciated the fact that this GA Bowie or whatever his.
Yep, Bowie.
Is, is very involved with it and so forth. So I, just a quick editorial comment about that. Jenny, my question is this, if, say the commission wanted to be on the front end of this as far as helping get this first budget going and wanted to commit with $50,000 and then consider in the future after budget and so forth, another four years or three years or whatever, do we not have a timeline on when the funds have to be committed for that ARPA?
Yeah, it's in '24.
In, in '24? Okay, okay, I couldn't remember on that. All right, thank you.
And Lon just spoke about what I'm, I'm thinking is a practical way. Go $50,000 now and then have a look at our situation.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Kreitzer?
I guess my question is, are we gonna, we're not gonna walk, I hope we're not walking away from this. I hope we're gonna make a decision today whether we're gonna be involved or not be involved.
I'm prepared to be involved, but, but I'm a little, as I say, need to be sold on five years.
Well, I don't know about the five-year period, but, because that's committing future commissions and you know how we've always shied away from that, but I would, I would strongly suggest that at least let's get this thing off the ground and get started. And whether we fund it through economic development or fund it directly to you guys, I'll leave that up to the chairman and our legal counsel to fund it. But I will make the motion that we go ahead and establish the $50,000 commitment from, from our Finney County for the first year and see where we are next year.
And, Mr. Chairman, before I second that motion, I'd like to ask Larry if he would include in that motion that we would reconsider, or not reconsider, we would consider additional funding after budget time and the other portion that this be channeled to the 501(c)(3) through the, oh, now I can't think the name of it again, the United School Administrators Organization.
United School Administrator Leadership Group is.
Whatever the 501(c)(3) name is. And, and again, so that, can we not do that?
Yes, I just, there, there needs to be a memorandum of understanding signed between the two parties prior to the.
That would be in any case, no matter where our funds.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, yep.
And that a MOU be entered into with the School Administrators Group, whatever that official name is.
Right.
If you would accept that.
Boy, did you mess up a simple motion.
No, it's $50,000 consideration after budget time. And it goes to one place rather than having funds go to the showcase for other places. But if you would accept that, I would, I would second the motion.
Let's leave it up to the chairman and the legal counsel where to direct the funds.
Okay, let's revise, if we can, discuss it this way. With Larry's consent, I would like to restate the motion to be $50,000 of immediate funding, reconsider additional funding in 2023 or 2024. And third, a requirement on the funding that a memorandum of understanding between the 501(c)(3) and the Board of County Commissioners be required in order to make the initial $50,000 payment. Is that your motion, Mr. Jones?
Sounds exactly like what I heard him say.
Well stated, Larry.
And is that a second, Mr. Pishney? It's been moved and seconded to have the initial funding done with reconsideration in 2023 with dispersal of the funds upon execution of a memorandum of understanding with 501(c)(3). Is there any further discussion on the outstanding motions?
You've answered my concern and so I'm ready to vote aye.
Question, is there any other comments? Apparently hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Kreitzer, and we'll consider further funding when we get through the budget.
All right. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is from our county attorney, Susan.
Good morning, commissioners. One of the first things I'd like to say is at noon today, there will be a remembrance ceremony in front of the LEC for all of our law enforcement, which my office will be badging up for. And I think it would be appropriate for all of you to show up as well. I would also just like to tag on to what Mr. Kreitzer was saying because I have been actively recruiting now for over two years and we're just now starting to see some momentum building in the fact that we'll have four interns starting this afternoon at 1:00. So that's taken me over two years to get that going. So anything you start today with high school students especially, you're looking at a minimum of four to six to maybe eight or nine years or more if they're going into a medical or healthcare profession that requires those extended degrees. So the payment's not gonna come today, it's not gonna come tomorrow, but it will eventually come and pay off if you support that. And we're in desperate need, I think, in most of our professional areas and even all of our trades. As I think anyone who's out in the community looking for a trade person or looking for a doctor or a lawyer or an accountant, anything along those lines, that's just what I'm hearing. And it's unfortunate that Mr. Kreitzer isn't here, but I would, I would strongly encourage you guys to continue supporting that because it's very difficult. It's very time consuming and it's very wearying to have to do the type of recruiting and discussions and meetings across the state to make those things happen. And I'm just one person trying to do it for one office. So having the power of many would be very helpful. And that kinda leads into what I was here for in the first place anyway. But across the state, what we're seeing is not only a lack of attorneys, we're seeing fewer graduates. Among those graduates, the pass rate of the bar is very low. What we saw in the spring bar exam was a 50% pass rate and last fall, I believe it was in the 70s, 68 to 70%, which is pretty low. So there are under 150 attorneys available every year within the state of Kansas to be put into the job market. And of those, we're competing and we're not able to, we haven't been able to succeed in that market with what we've been able to pay. I think we're finally at a place where we can do some of that. And that's been due to the generosity of you guys, but also due to the fact that we have been running two attorneys short and roughly four to five staff members short, which is creating other problems internally with stuff we can't get done. But, you know, it's just what we have to do to make things happen. And then on top of that, the legislature has now passed a law that says that all the district attorneys will be paid 174.5 beginning January of 2025. January of 2025. What also needs to be understood with that is those district attorneys are being supplemented by their counties, and many of them are being paid more than that today. So, that means that their, what their current wages are being supplemented by the counties in order for them to exceed, some of them, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, what I'm asking for is for this county to raise my salary this year to a hundred and sixty, then agree to raise it again next year, so that by 2025, we can be commensurate with the rest of the state. And then I'll be dragging up the rest of my attorneys with me, so that we can again be commensurate with the rest of the state. What we're finding is that deputies across the state are making over a hundred and fifty thousand, and those with fifteen years are running about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is not where we're at today. So, in order for us to be able to compete, we have to at least be equal to, or greater than those on the eastern half of the state just because of where we are and what our challenges are with bringing people out and also encouraging them to stay. So, that is my request of you today. Do you have any questions?
Questions of the commissioners to the county attorney. All right. Does anybody have any comments on the request from the county attorney for an increase from one forty-eight to one sixty effective next payroll? Is that what-
Well, it, it was originally May first, but then we had to change that request until, to show up today because we had some things come up in the office. I couldn't appear on the May first date.
So, effective when?
If it could be effective this payroll, that would be, I think that would have started last Monday.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm the opinion that this should be taken up in our budget sessions instead of a special line item today. I think this should be part of our department budget discussions.
And, oh.
Other comments from commissioners? Sure?
Chairman, that, that's where my thoughts were. We're so close to beginning our budget considerations and so forth, why not, why would this not be a part of that discussion? So, I'm echoing Duane's comment.
The balance of the employees within the county were raised, I believe, January first or March first. When were the balance of the county employees raised?
It was in October, but I believe that your, your department decided to not participate in the wage enhancement-
Until this year.
-review. So, I don't think that any of the county attorney's job descriptions were reviewed through our-
We put ours off until, I believe, April first of this year, when everyone else had theirs last October. That's why, I, I mean, that's why I've, I've waited.
I, I'm, I'm gonna have to concur, I will concur with Duane. I think we need to, you know, do this through our normal budget process. And we're right up against it right now, so.
Mr. Jones?
Well, this kind of is a repeat request, because it was less than a year ago that Susan was before us to raise, I thought then, to a hundred and fifty thousand. What, I don't remember exactly what that pay raise was, but it was using some idle funds out of your budget. So, I, I agree with the other ones. It's budget time. Let's, let's go through the budget process and see where we are.
My thought on this is that the leadership that Susan is attempting to provide to us is to anticipate the demand that's been set by statute. And I did ask staff to do some other comparative work. Of the county attorneys of county similar size, Susan's the highest-paid county attorney, correct?
Yes.
And the implementation of the legislation for district attorneys, those district attorneys are paid by the state, are they not? Susan, can you help me out?
They're paid by the state and supplemented by their counties. So, for instance, Riley County today is being paid, it's my understanding, a hundred and seventy-five plus. At least that's what it was last April. So, whatever the state is today, they're being supplemented up to a hundred and seventy-five. And, and a lot of the numbers that you guys are going to be getting, I'm sure, are not exactly correct. But-
Kelly checked with the different, the various-
Okay. Because when I talked to the, I talked to the Douglas County Attorney, I've talked to the Riley County Attorney and several of the others, and so they're being supplemented by their counties. Their, their offices are just, I think, roughly the same size or bigger. However, like Riley County, all of municipal, or all of the misdemeanors are going through municipal court. They're not going through Riley County District Attorney. So, it's a little bit different setup. Their, their deputies are earning about a hundred and fifty-five.
I don't think you're gonna get a motion today, and I could be-
That's fine.
But I want you to know that I think that getting the attention of the commission as to what the legislature did reference to the district attorneys is important for all of us to understand. And the situation where we're at economically in our community with the fewer number of attorneys is important for everyone to keep in mind. But I want to applaud you for the four interns and the continued recruitment that your office does. You lost a county counselor that's sitting to our right. You lost attorneys to private practice out of your office. Your office continues to be a recruiting door, but at the same time, an important aspect is, is that you're the largest county attorney staff in Western Kansas, in all of Western Kansas, and perhaps, in my opinion, the largest law firm, also in Western Kansas. And so, it is important that your leadership be reflected in the amount of compensation for which you are paid. Since we won't get a motion on it, we're gonna take this up at budgeting. That having been said, I think that it's important not just for the county attorney, other elected officials, and department heads to understand that the budgeting session coming up is going to be about cutting budget. We're going to provide some tax relief, even though the legislature didn't. And I am convinced that a majority of this commission is going to be about finding a way to cut the mill levy to reflect the increases in valuation that occurred. We went through a significant set of meetings for budgeting goals and process, and there is not one person sitting on this side of the table for whom I am aware that wants to cut anybody's present compensation. In fact, we're going to increase it. But what we are going to have to do is we're gonna have to eliminate positions. In order to cut the budget, we're gonna have to eliminate positions. And I don't take this opportunity lightly, but the county attorney is reflective of many other elected officials or agencies of the county, is that we have a large voluminous number of open positions. And it seems to me that if we're going to be able to raise the wages of the people that we have, we're gonna have to eliminate positions. And that is a budgeting issue, and to that extent, the majority of the commission is, is that this is going to wait. But I would hope that every department head and elected official is listening carefully, is, is that when we receive budget proposals, I want to see the reduced number of total positions so that the budget can be cut, so that compensation to those people who dedicated themselves and work for the county and provide the actual services are getting paid fairly and commensurate to work that they're doing. And we're post-COVID, and I'm tired of hearing about COVID. What I want to hear about is the progress that we're making to improve the lives of everyone in Fannie County, including all of our employees. That includes our elected officials, as yourself. And I acknowledge that you're doing great work in helping to recruit to our community, and your wage request is not going to be taken up at this time, but it's going to be the spring board and the trampoline into our budget discussion of which way we're headed and how we're going to provide some kind of relief for those taxpayers who have had no relief from the legislature in 2023. And we have some really good goals as a five-member commission from our department heads and from you, Susan, as to how we can accomplish the things that we must do, the things that we can do, and those various times when we have a little bit of discretion of what we should or may do. So, with that, thank you. We're gonna table your request until the budgeting process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is EMS with e-services, Skyler?
So, just similar to what we, what I brought up last commission meeting, this time it's been evaluated by Ms. Schartz over there. And this is, just to remind you, this is a agreement with e-services that would allow our third-party builder to process paper checks that they receive at their office and deposit that money directly into our accounts. So, that just agreement just facilitates that. Again, there is no additional cost to Fannie County for this service. It is all incorporated into the service agreement that we have with Quick Med Claims.
Ms. Schartz, do you have any comment on the contract?
I think it's appropriate at this point in time. I've reviewed it, it passed at least the initial review going through the agreement.
Mr. Jones, do you have a comment?
No comments.
Motion, anybody?
I'll offer a motion.
Okay, and that motion is to approve the agreement and not-
I'll offer the motion to, to approve alternative two and to allow Skyler to sign.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve alternative number two in the packet proposed in the stated motion as read aloud. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Skyler, for bringing this prior to your signature. All right. Madam County Appraiser, Maria Castillo, with a contract approval.
Yes, it's the contract for McCullough and Associates. It's a yearly contract. We've had them since reappraisal started, and they usually work, help us work with our depreciation studies, neighborhood analysis, land models, gradient CDU, income models, and market modeling. Also, he provides really, it's all, it's all written in the contract, and it's a contract that we do every year, like I said. He provides great assistance just to make sure that I stay on track, to make sure I meet all my deadlines and all our studies and so forth. He also holds some classes for all of the counties that he does. I think he's got like fourteen, fifteen counties in the state of Kansas. Last year, he actually had a data collection class, which a lot of my staff here, because he'll come here to Garden City to hold the class. I can call him with questions if I have any kind of questions, and we review all the studies. I have to, he does the studies and so forth, and then I'll review them and go through them and see if that's where I want the stuff to go, as far as all of that. So, my recommendation is to approve. And do you have any questions for me?
Questions, or questions from the commissioners?
Just a clarification, the, the letter, the cover letter that's up on the screen, it says this proposal is valid through July of 2023.
His contracts go from like July, no.
Yeah, is what it says in the letter.
The proposal is valid. He wants it back by July fifteenth.
The proposal.
Yeah, he wants the contract signed by July fifteenth.
And it would be July to July.
Yeah, he does July one, he follows the state's guidelines, yeah. No problem.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The contract provides on page four, Commissioner, that services continue until June thirtieth of 2024, or till completion, whichever occurs first.
Yeah, I was reading, I misread the proposal word, so.
I'm kinda looking for the total cost of the contract. Do we add it in our motion?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand.
And he said there's no change in that?
From last year, no.
Thirty-eight, Commissioner.
It should be in the contract. It's written. It's on page four, compensation. And then thirty-eight thousand, one hundred.
Thirty-eight, one.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract with McCullough and Associates for thirty-eight thousand, one hundred for this coming year.
Sir, second please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed contract with McCullough and Associates. His signature date of twenty-sixth of April, 2023, as proposed by the county appraiser. Any further discussion or questions of the appraiser? Ms. Schartz has legal reviewed this contract?
Yes, I have, and questioned some things about it, just in the sense of it's been meeting her needs, and it's been an ongoing contract, and the contract appears to be appropriate as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny, you have the floor with regard to Personnel Policy Committee Discussion.
Good morning. We are requesting that the Board of Commissioners rescind the Personnel Policy Committee motion made January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, naming members to the committee, strike the requirements of the committee to make amendments from the current personnel policy, and allow the administration to move forward with the policy revisions and updates that will be brought to the board for final approval later this year. And this was established for the purposes of reviewing, amending, and making interpretations on policy when questions arose. In two thousand and seventeen, the committee was updated with specific names, not position titles. So, as people have left or retired from the county, we are down to a single person on that committee. So, we are requesting that administration be authorized to work through the revisions and updates internally and collaborate with all directors and their department leaders to ensure that questions and concerns are addressed during the process. We will involve legal counsel in the process as well. The Personnel Attorney has reviewed our policy, and they have already made some red line strikes in it from a previous review that they did a couple of years ago, and they are recommending that we do go through this process and get our policy updated because it is very outdated. And Kelly has a PTO policy that she would like to have implemented on July first, that she's been working on for well over a year. EMS has done the pilot test on that, and they are very happy with their PTO, the changes that we've made to that from the sick and vacation leave to the PTO. So, we are requesting today that we be allowed to go ahead and rescind the Personnel Policy Committee and work through this internally. Do you have questions for me?
Okay, I want to make sure I'm clear first.
Okay.
The requested motion is to rescind the Personnel Policy Committee provisions on page four of the current handbook.
Yes, on page four and page five, under the amendments section.
Two is to strike the Personnel Policy Committee from the two thousand nineteen revision under amendments.
Uh-huh.
And three, then set a policy that personnel policy and miscellaneous policy revisions and updates will be brought to the board by staff.
Correct. The first motion is to rescind the motion naming that Personnel Policy Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can't see who's running the computer today. Can you just scroll to the bottom of that, so we can just see those, or wherever that, those three options?
It is back a page.
Yeah, maybe it's back.
Back another one. There you go.
So, we can have that on the screens as we're considering this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we rescind the motion of, that named the Personnel Policy Committee, option number one.
All right, first motion with regard to this action on the agenda is to rescind the motion from one seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, naming a Personnel Policy Committee. Is there a second to that motion? motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the motion and second?
It appears to me like we're streamlining. I'm all for saving time and streamline.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Second motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we strike from the Personnel Committee from the current 2019 version of the Personnel Policy under Section 1 amendments.
Right. Is there any second to that motion?
Oh, go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded to take staff recommendation number two as stated in the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Third, administration, to authorize administration to move forward with Personnel Policy and miscellaneous policy revisions and updates to be brought before the board for approval when completed. Is there a motion in that regard?
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize and implement recommendation number three as stated in the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Last on the business agenda is from Ideatech, an MOU approval, Doug, and thanks for waiting us out today. I know that you had spoke to the clerk, but I wanted to wait until we got to the agenda, so that was me, and don't take it out on Gabby.
That's fine. This MOU with Ideatech just details the interaction outside of any current contracts that we have. It is to further the grant process for the Highway 83 corridor grant, and I think the MOU was included. I'm just seeking permission for the MOU to be signed by Finney County.
Is this a percentage contribution that we need to approve, a certain percentage?
It was not. It was just a flat dollar amount. I think the dollar amount approved was $400,000, and last or maybe the previous commission meeting that was approved to be processed through the ARPA grant. So everything's been approved. We're just seeking signature for the MOU, and yes, the MOU has been seen by legal.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, can you refresh my memory? This $400,000 was a pass-through for the I, no, for the U-83 corridor, is that correct?
Highway 83 corridor, correct.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make the motion, but here in our literature, we say the county administrator to sign. Does that need to be the Assistant County Administrator or Jenny, or are we able to have the county administrator sign?
No, that would need to be me at this time.
And is your official title Assistant County Administrator?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the MOU with Ideatech as presented and authorize the Assistant County Administrator to sign the document.
Very clear motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the Assistant Administrator to sign the MOU with Ideatech. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Before Doug leaves, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Have we, has the project started? What's the status?
It has started, and I know that they have made some mileage installed inside of Finney County. I don't have a current status, but part of this is we should receive status updates from them soon, too.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, we have a review of our board budget goals and priorities. Yes. If somebody on Ideatech wanted to address the commission?
I just wanted to, Tim Milford with Ideatech. I'm Tim Milford with Ideatech, and I just wanted to thank Finney County and the commissioners for your part in the 83 corridor project. That, we were successful in that mainly because all the counties committed to that. There is a new grant out, and we are applying for it. It's called the Link, and it's going to basically be dedicated to Finney County. Two hundred and sixty homes that weren't reachable by the 83 corridor are going to be in this last piece. So this last piece that we're applying for will basically sweep Finney County. Should be able to reach everybody. I want you guys to be aware of that. We'd like any kind of support, letter of support, any support you can give. It meant a lot on the last one, and that's why we were so successful in getting that last grant, so.
Well, can you help us who we should contact to assist in your grant application?
It would be James Kristolik with Ideatech. I'm here on his behalf. He's at another county speaking today, but yeah, James Kristolik with Ideatech would be the person.
Did the commission take any formal action in support of the last grant?
Well, in, with the commitment of the $400,000, I don't remember if there was a formal letter or not.
There was also a formal letter at that time, and we will be passing that information along with this also.
Do you need a new letter, Doug?
We will be seeking a new letter. I think we're processing that request now.
This grant just opened up May 5th, I believe, is when this particular window opened on this one.
I'm real excited about it, and get the letter request to Jenny, and she'll get it to us and get you the support we need for this grant application.
Thank you very much.
Also the reason why you had to stay.
Oh, no. I don't have a problem with that. I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, got ahead of myself. Development update?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So I have a few updates for you this morning. First, Country Acres, one of the contractors. I've been in contact with him over the past week. It looks like they might be getting ready to start. There's not a timeline yet, but they're just trying to get all of the materials right now to start the construction on the roads. Randall Estates, he's still working on getting his letter of credit and then also getting us the new cost estimates for the project so we can move forward with the amendment to the R H I D. Then other updates for you, tomorrow at the city commission meeting, there will be the public hearing to vacate Hummer Drive. That's that road that we're vacating or asking to be vacated on the property where the new EMS Health Department facility will be. So that public hearing is at 1:45, and then this Thursday will be Planning Commission, and this will be the Planning Commission where the metal storage container amendment will be going back to them. And that's all I have for you this morning, unless you have any questions for me.
What's your opinion on the metal storage container, concise?
As it stands, I think that mine and Kara's opinion and NDS, I feel like, as well, this amendment that's being proposed doesn't look at the regulations as a whole, and so if we look at amending it, then we need to look at making sure that we're being consistent throughout the entire zoning regulations.
There wasn't really a up or down. Thank you for deciding to it.
You're welcome.
I think we correct.
Well, I know that Planning Commission has been on that schedule and so forth, but Thursday morning is also when we're here for hearing outside agencies, and I don't know, I assume that you'll be at the Planning Commission on behalf of the county.
Yes.
Do we think that anyone else should be over there for a little bit with Mackenzie or?
I plan to attend that meeting with her as well.
Oh, okay, okay. That'd be good. I just, we just had a conflict, and I just want to make sure that the county is well represented, as there might be some comments and we might need to clarify or something like that.
Not only are we busy, Thursday morning, we'll be busy Thursday afternoon, and you'll be back for that.
Yes. Going back to the storage containers as well, just as a professional opinion, with the cost of building materials going up constantly and trying to find the best economical way for people to use containers and other things that are currently in existence, it is something that we need to be a little bit more creative with. Now, whether this is the, the solution or not, I don't know, but we do need to look at more creative options within the whole county of how to start development.
Well, I had an opportunity to take a swing through four states this weekend, and these containers are popping up everywhere in rural America, and I think that we need to have a set policy that is well thought out and approved by the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I only went through two states this weekend, but there's one storied, it's a commercial storage area, and it's all containers. And I know this one that we've had in front of us is different from a standpoint as a homeowner and so forth and so on, but you're absolutely right. The containers, in some fashion, are showing up more and more.
We'll have folks stacking them for drudges if we don't have some kind of regulation as to what's going on.
Exactly.
I have a quick question. Unrelated to anything else discussed, a person buys a newer than 1986 double-wide mobile home. What permitting must he go through in order to move that from one place to another in the county?
I know there's a certain permit. I think it's especially for ones coming out of the county to this county, that they do have to go to NDS, and there's a certain permit that they have to fill out. And then it also depends on which, what the zoning is from where it's being transferred from to where it's being transferred to. So if it's being transferred to like a normal, single-family zoning.
I think he's wanting to move it to a mobile home court, but it's out in the county.
Mm-hmm.
But which office does he go to to get permission to do that? Is it yours, or is it the Neighborhood Development?
That'll be the Neighborhood Development Services Department.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mackenzie? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
On down the line or up the line, County Administrator?
Yes, attended various meetings throughout the month, and we're working on budgets diligently, having those meetings in-house, and I believe Kurt has an update for you on the Northwest Industrial Sewer emergency that we had last week.
I would hear from Curtis Logston, please.
Curtis Logston, Finney County Public Works Director. With the emergency that we had at Northwest Industrialistic Lift Station that we took over, there's a few things. First of all, we were able to get it fixed on Friday. No, wait, let me think. It was Wednesday, I believe. I'm going to back up a little bit because when we took this lift station over, we really ended up taking over, I guess we didn't realize that we were taking over a problem at the time. We have had numerous issues with it since day one. What we found out when we ended up needing to make this emergency repair to it was that when we got down into the well, we found out that when it was first built, nobody can really figure out if anybody had any plans to build it by because it was piecemealed together, and there is a reason why we have struggled with keeping it working. We were able to make repairs to it that we believe will keep it fully operational until the new lift station is built and totally replaces it. If a pump goes out, it won't take very long for us to go back in and replace the pump. So we do believe that the repairs that were done are basically, I guess you could call it a permanent temporary repair until the new lift station is working.
Give me a second. Jenny, we made an emergency request for money under the policy. What was that amount that we spent?
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, Kurt's request was fifteen thousand. It has not. I don't believe we've received any kind of, we just needed the approval to go ahead with the repairs, knowing that it would be, and they will bill us after the fact.
Very good.
And we have since then received the invoice, so it will end up in the stream here real quick to be paid for. But that was completed. Like I said, it's fully operational. In kind of relation to that, I also wanted to bring up, Mr. Kreischer kind of referred to it a few minutes ago when he was up here about the bidding, the bidding process for the sewer district upgrades, for all of the upgrades. There's another thing that I want to, I'd like the public to know, the people involved in Western Kansas Corridor development, is that there's a reason why it's taken so long for us to get the design completed in order to be able to go out to bid. The reason is that, as everybody knows, ever since COVID, COVID has done something to our country that nobody believed was going to happen. In just about every instance, whether it's buying trucks, cars, pickups, whatever, it has changed the availability of certain items. The pumps that is needed for this big project that we're going forward with, a lot of the pumps aren't available right now, or they are a long time out as far as being available. So what the engineers had to do is that they had to go through the long process of looking to see what each lift station needed for a pump, and then they had to go through the process of eliminating pumps that weren't going to be available to the pumps that are available. Finally, just about two weeks ago, the final design finally got completed because it was determined what pumps were going to be available for this. At that time, the electrical engineers said that they pretty much guaranteed that they would have their part of the design completed this coming Friday. So as of right now, and last week, we were checking with them, and they were still on schedule. They haven't had anything put them behind. So now it looks like we are going to hopefully have the final design completed by Friday, which means we are going to start the bidding process to go out to bid next week. So finally, it's here. Now, just like what I wanted to let you all know is that just because they have found the pumps that they needed to go with... just because they have found the pumps that they needed to go with, it's still the same thing as we had talked about earlier on the Northwest Industrial District Lift Station that we took over, is that the pumps, once they get ordered, then they go into the process to be manufactured and we could still have some pumps that take a while to come in. I'm estimating that once we go out to bid, that within the next year, the entire project should be completed within the next year. So that is what I have on that. I did have something else that I needed to bring forward to you that wasn't available at the time of this agenda. Was that on the highway? Now, did you have any questions on that before I go to something else? Nope?
If it wasn't in the agenda or so forth, what's the circumstance of bringing it up late? And is it something that should wait until it's agendized?
It would be more involved in my report.
Well, five minutes or less?
It won't take me very long to give it to you. It's up to you guys how long you want to take on it, so.
You're saying it's just a report, not an action item?
Well, it could become an action item, but it's something that needs to be brought up right now.
Proceed, please.
Okay, on the Highway eighty-three project that KDOT has on south of town here, where they're going to relocate most of Highway eighty-three. As you guys are aware, is that when the what plan was that, McKenzie?
Comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan. There was plans at the time for that trail to come underneath, a bike trail, pedestrian trail to come underneath Highway eighty-three coming from Southwind, correct? KDOT approached me just last week and that they have decided that if we want that CBC, the box structure underneath the highway in order to use for the trail purposes, that we will need to pay for the CBC required for that. Now, this is something that has changed a little bit. When I had talked with Ron earlier this year, or I guess end of last year, he, Ron Hall, he had pretty much acted like that if we needed it, I was under the interpretation that he was just going to put it in the design. Well, Ron Hall is out on extended leave right now and so he's not available. What I did get KDOT to do is I asked him, well, you need to tell us, oh, and what do we, how much money are we looking at for the CBC? And it was determined that it's, we're looking at around one hundred twenty-five to one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars for the CBC to go underneath the highway. So this is something that you guys are going to need to make a decision on. If we want to, if we want a trail to go underneath the highway, then we're going to have to make a decision if we're going to pay the amount that is required on that. The other portion that he brought, that Gary brought forward to us at the same time was that now they're wanting us to make a final decision also on what part of Highway eighty-three do we want to keep as far as that we maintain and so on and so forth. They are needing to put it in the final design as far as the eradication of the highway. And so what I wanted to ask you guys is if you guys want to be involved in that process or not, otherwise Public Works could look at that and try to make up the decision on that.
And that latter part, they had presented to us when we were out at KDOT office. Is that what you're talking about when we were out there with Ron Hall and others at that meeting a couple of months ago?
Well, it was actually before that when Ron and I, we drove the entire route out there and we were discussing it then. That's when Ron pretty much made me believe that KDOT would, if we wanted the trail system, that they would.
No, I meant for the road that we would be taking over, the piece of the road that we'd be taking over.
Correct, correct. That was, that's part of that, correct.
Yeah, I'm not very excited about spending, when the trail, the boxes are there, I don't understand what, why we have to pay KDOT one hundred twenty-five thousand for them when they're existing.
I think it's because they're going to be changing the highway though, and so with the change of the highway, it would require a new structure.
I think that we ought to have some kind of outline and presentation before we make any decisions on that.
I agree with that. I just wanted to hear the report.
And as far as taking over part of eighty-three, the only thing I understood they were going to change it was from from the school north to, what was it, parallel? They were going to leave that section of eighty-three there for our.
Well, I've heard different things. Again, I wasn't here at the beginning of that when they presented it to you.
Before we start committing to things, we need to have a real sit-down with them and say exactly what what they need from us.
So would you like me to schedule a meeting with them?
I think so.
I guess so. They've got new players, it sounds like.
And then do you want to discuss the CBC at the same time?
Yes, I would think so.
Okay, that's what I need right now because they are pushing me a little bit to get an answer or timeframe as soon as possible so they can get moving on with the plans, so.
I would ask you to coordinate that through the Administrator's Office for a proper presentation to the commission.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I had unless you guys had any questions on the report.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
County Counselor?
I have a couple of other things.
Oh, excuse me. You got more?
Yes, I have two more, two more things. Trista also has an update for you on tax collection.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Madam Treasurer. How are you?
Great, how are you?
Better now that you're here.
Sure. So for the, for the good of the audience, so my name is Trista Joyce. I'm the County Treasurer. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on tax collections as the tax deadline was May tenth. So current tax collections for tax year 2022 began in November of 2022. The 2022 tax levied by all taxing entities was about eighty-three point seven million dollars. These taxing entities include the state, county, community college, cities, school districts, townships, and other special districts. The Fiddy County Treasurer's Office collects taxes on behalf of all entities and distributes the tax collections five times per year, with the two largest of these distributions happening in January and June, which follow the first and second half due dates for the taxes. Currently, about ninety-three percent of the tax roll has been collected and that is as of Friday, May twelfth. The current tax collection and distribution period began on March first, 2023 and will end five-twenty of 2023 with the funds being distributed on six-five of 2023. The period between May twentieth and June fifth will be used to balance those tax collections before we send them out. During this period, the Treasurer's Office has collected approximately twenty-seven point five million dollars, with twenty-two million being collected in the past three weeks. On May twelfth, tax collections were placed into a CD which will mature the business day before these funds are required to be distributed. After we request bids from nine different eligible banks in Fannie County, the winner of this bid was Commerce Bank at a rate of five point four percent. So this investment will yield approximately ninety-four thousand dollars in interest income at the maturity of the investment, which ends up being about a three-week investment. It's a pretty quick turnaround. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. I apologize for it not being in the agenda since the deadline was last Wednesday. Does anybody have any questions on current tax collections?
Yes, I just want to say kudos because money in the bank is something that we can cash basis of budget. So continue to work hard on putting the money that's been deposited with us to work. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The ninety-three percent rate, is that above or below what you've done in the past?
It's about even with what we have seen in the past. So 2020 was an interesting year. Tax collections were down slightly, so we've seen that come back up to previous collection rates. If no more questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Back to the Administrator.
The last thing that I have is last Monday, May eighth, we got notification from the Kansas Emergency Management Association that Paul Resley has, his application for a Kansas Certified Emergency Manager has been approved and he will be pinned at the KMEA Conference in Mulvane on September fourteenth. And I believe we have a certificate to present him today.
Wonderful.
Congratulations, Paul.
That is all I have.
All right, moving down the agenda then to the County Counselor's report.
Really, for most of the agenda items that have been presented this afternoon have been, or this morning, this latter half, I have been involved in reviewing those contracts. I do, there's not much to update on, on pending legislation, but if the, we did put on there for an executive session for that, if the board wishes to have a brief update on that, I don't believe that it would take much time to go through those attorney-client privileged information.
Yes, Jenny?
I think that the executive session that we requested was for personnel issues with Kelly. Not, because there's only one on there.
Well, I don't know that we necessarily need one. There isn't much to update. I didn't see that there was any, on the pending wait for the Supreme Court, I don't see that there's been any action taken on that yet. So I'm not sure that there's any real update on where things are at with that particular matter. And there's not much board movement from the other matters that have been discussed, so.
All right. Madam Administrator, is this a good time for the executive session?
Sure.
I would entertain a motion for ten minutes. Is that what we need?
I believe so. And we need HR.
HR and the Assistant Administrator.
And County Counselor, please.
And County Counselor, yeah. And the Board. I would so move that we do that for ten minutes. Up to, well, for ten minutes.
Reconvene at eleven-twenty?
Looks like, looks like it.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Moving second to go into executive session and reconvene at eleven-twenty. And include HR Administrator and County Counselor.
And Mr. Chairman, for the record and for recording for non-elected personnel.
Thank you. That's the purpose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be in executive session until eleven-twenty. Order and motion to out of executive session, chairman noting that no action was taken. Is there such a motion?
I'd offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second it out of executive session into regular session, noting that no action was taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Back into regular session. Anybody have any questions on department monthly reports that are presented? Does anybody else have anything they want to address to the commission? Gabby, upcoming meetings and events? All right. Any other additions or deletions from the commissioners? It's a hectic or busy week for us. We have the eighteenth and nineteenth each convening each morning at eight thirty. And then we have the work session at eleven o'clock on Thursday. The nice part is, is lunches provided. Pretty good lunches. And remember if Curtis is going to be along, that we get the requests in for adequate meals for everyone. Commissioners' reports, starting on my left, Mr. Jones.
On your left?
Left. You.
That must be me. I don't have much to report, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple rude complaints, and one of those I asked Jenny for permission to give directly to Curtis. And I think he took care of, sort of, anyway. The other was a call from an oil field, an acquaintance of mine who works in the oil field. And due to the rain, they were having trouble getting in. And I suggested he call Curtis. Little bit, he called back and said, "Well, that was better than Curtis." He called, and Larry Brungard answered the phone, said, "We're already working on whatever it was that had them stuck so they couldn't get into the oil patch." So, good work for you guys. My meeting's LEPC was canceled this month. And the library board, due to the new appointees and conflicts, is not tonight, but rather it's going to be a week down the road. So, that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Drize?
First thing, we had a fair board meeting. They're getting into the weeds, kind of looked about a two-and-a-half hour meeting on exactly how everything's going to flow. We have a very active fair board, and I'm quite sure it's going to be a great fair. We do have a concert that's going to be presented on the first Saturday. Country Western Star has won several, several awards, several top-ten tunes. So, hopefully, he draws a good crowd. Second one, I'm going to address Dave's. The road complaint is in my department, in my district, very far northeast of county. I spent a half an hour with the gentleman on the phone. Last Sunday, I took a nice tour of my district. And of the twenty-one roads that I've toured, this is the only road that has some issues. I mean, those roads, as a rule, in east of Twenty-three Highway. I was very, very pleased. I think our road department's doing a fantastic job with those roads. But this particular road is, I believe he's the only rancher that runs down that road. And it deals to some of the earth sick properties. And it is a bad-shaped road. Curtis and I have visited about it. Curtis has made sure that that road was worked last week, and it was. However, today, I've been, I'm deleted with messages from him this morning. His road's messed up again because he went down it with a four-wheel drive pickup, and he's still not happy. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. I do not think the commission as a whole needs to get down in the weeds with this one. This is a, something that Curtis needs to work through with this individual. And I, as the commissioner from that district, will probably stay in touch with Curtis and be involved. But he's not a happy camper, but he's doing it to his own roads. So, enough said.
Okay, I just would comment that, make sure that the administrator's office is aware of the actions that are being requested from the commission to staff. All right, Commissioner Jones?
The only thing I had was one complaint on a road that they were, was in the process of being rebuilt. And since I was out of town, I just received a verbal message on my phone. And this person complained that we were doing it at a four percent grade or six percent grade instead of two. I don't know, but it was amazing to me that somebody could go out there and determine two percent grade on a road by eyeballing it. So, I have not proceeded to follow up. I fear time will cure the problem.
Complaint was referred to staff, or to administrator?
No, it wasn't referred to anybody but my phone.
Okay, well, you do with it as you wish, Commissioner, I'm sure. Anything else?
Mm-mm.
Commissioner Pisney?
Larry's comment earlier today, and Jenny, I think you need to get a couple of applications into each of our hands so that when somebody has suggestions, we can ask them to apply for a job. It may not be Public Works always, but it might be something else. But on a serious note, though, a couple of things that I've done, or done and doing. I have an extension district meeting tonight up in Scott City with the, our, whatever our extension district name is. I can't remember the name.
West Plains.
West Plains, yeah, West Plains District, thank you. Also, last week, I had a meeting right here in this room with the real men, real leaders. And I don't know, I saw a few of these little brochures on the table. We let each of them, or we let each of the real men, real leaders, young men, sit in your chairs briefly and play like they were a commissioner. And when I said, "Act like you're making an important decision," like we would in our meeting, and one of the young men went like this. So, I guess we look like this sometimes. It was kind, it was pretty cute. But anyhow, they do a program where they help the real men, real leaders understand about city government, state government, and county government. I'm not sure if they do anything on the federal side. And I know Dave, it was a year or two ago, was with the group of young men. But I want to shout, put a shout out to Tyler in the administrative office for putting this together quickly so we could have something in their hands that lists our different departments and so forth. So, she did that for me, and I really appreciate that. The last thing I want to mention, and he's still sitting here in the room, is Gennaro's, Gennaro. Yeah. Sometimes I want to say a different name for you, Gennaro. But was very responsive when I reached out to Curtis because we're having some issues with the Sunset Terrace development and mud flowing into our subdivision, construction trucks coming into our subdivision next to it. And I really appreciated him coming out the other day and just kind of eyeballing the different concerns we have. And some of that was, there was action taken the next day, actually. So, I appreciate the responsiveness from Public Works. And lastly, I'll give him credit because as we're out there looking at some of that stuff on Thursday, the rain started falling. So, I think Gennaro needs to be out in the country, and wherever he is, the rain will follow him. So, but anyhow, that's, that's it.
My report is, is that Compass Area Mental Health is, my assigned board, one of them. And there are lots of things going on with Compass that are great news for our community. Incredible growth opportunities will be coming as a result of their hard work and is reflective of their ability to continue their charge. And for those who may not know, Area Mental Health is a coalition of county commissions under resolution authorized by statute to create community health, especially community mental health. And the fact that that board has chosen and we continue to see the benefits to our community for all their hard work. Kudos to not only the board, but the staff and administration. We look forward to their agency hearing, and I don't want to take away their thunder for that presentation upcoming this week. But exciting things are happening in that regard. I did attend the commissioners' part of the county day in the park. And I would give kudos to all of the department heads, including our assistant administrator, for the presentation of what Finney County does in our county day at the park. Although the weather was not great, we just have to bear with it. If that's what it takes to get that kind of rain, we'll continue to have sheltered days at the park. I would note from the commissioner's chair is that every one of the road complaints that are addressed to me go immediately to the administrator for proper channeling to the road department. What a wonderful thing to have a problem with, since we went nine months with no rain, no measurable problems. And then to have limited problems on roads or road complaints is wonderful. And I'll continue to tell Public Works to continue to work hard on maintaining our roads. They are the economic vitality of us. We have countless miles of roads in our county, and we need to be good stewards of them. And if problems get to the point where one single taxpayer is using one single road, I would remind the taxpayer that we can abandon that road and they can take care of it themselves. I would be mindful of that.
Can I use that?
I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you need it, Commissioner. I don't have anything else other than to go back on the agenda to board of governance. And we have this sheet, and I don't know what page it is for the guy running the screens today, but it's our items from the work session. And these are our goals that we put together. We invested considerable time, and I've already addressed during our time with the county attorney, to me, the importance of doing this. And I would say that, Jenny, would you explain to us the numbering system that you used in making this report to us?
They were numbered according to the number of different departments that spoke on those topics. So, the first one was flexible schedules and was talked about by the most departments and you all, you five. So, I counted your, the things that you five said, plus all of the departments that were, that spoke on a topic.
Well.
Oh, oh, yeah, now I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay.
And so, it's obvious that if you look at the items and the compilation of the materials from the administrator in our sessions, it fits closely to what we've talked about several times. And you folks, as commissioners, are much better versed at understanding and developing the budget with all of these competing interests involved. And I just want to thank you for making these priorities public so that the public can understand decisions that are made and how difficult they are, keeping in mind that this is what the department heads and all the officials are telling us as to their priorities. I would share with the commission and public generally is, is that although I made a rather long address to the county attorney, we're going to have to make those really hard decisions on how to help the people that actually do the work in the county be successful at the same time holding the line. And I would state again, as your chairman, that I'm quite frustrated with the legislature in not providing any meaningful tax relief to homeowners and owners of property generally, which is the largest source of revenue for the operations of our constitutionally and state-managed government services. I know I'll get a remark from Dr. Clifford, our representative, and others that they did provide twenty-five thousand dollars worth of exemption from the twenty-one-and-a-half mills of your ad valorem tax that goes to pay for the state's education system. That amounts to about ten dollars. Thank you very much. I'm so glad they provided that relief. That tells you how small a house I have. So, with that being said, is there any other business before the commission? And a motion to adjourn, Mr. Jones?
All this, all for such?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any other statements or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.